I'm glad you're here. 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 Roll call, please.
Here. 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 Here.
Uh, adoption of the agenda, please.
Make the motion we adopt the events presented.
Second. Got a motion in second, will those in favor raise your hand? Got it. Intended as adopted. Recognition, faith, dreams, Adam, I'm gonna hand that over to you.
Yes.
First off, I want to welcome everybody that's here and appreciate everybody coming out and helping us through this situation.
Yes, thank you all for coming. Appreciate it very much, showing interest in our district and things going on in our community. We had a unfortunate incident last week where we had started school, we had been in for eight days, and our COVID cases were spiraling very quickly, unfortunately. We had 18 across the district by the end of the first week and then up to 40 by the end of the second week. And our, had our testing program going and things were spiraling very fast and we ended up in with outbreak status according to our local health department in three of our schools. And so at that time, it was a very difficult decision. Obviously, nobody wanted this for the school year whatsoever. We made a decision to close down the school for five days leading into Labor Day weekend and readjust. And so tonight is about that readjustment, readjusting to get things going, to get back into school on Tuesday. And so tonight, the district will be talking about the district operation and safety plan that's been in effect and any adaptations that need to be made to that. And before that, we would like to give you a chance to speak to the board if you are interested in doing so. We do have microphones down on both sides and we ask that you keep that to three minutes, which is board policy if at all possible. And then also, obviously, if someone has, you know, to keep the night timely-wise, if someone has shared the information already that you were gonna share, you know, it would be great if timely-wise, we could, we could hear from different people that have different opinions on things the best we can. But we also want, the board very much wants to hear from you if you have something that you would like to share with them. So I'll open that up to you. The mics are there if anybody's interested in speaking.
Mine's gonna be a little longer than three minutes. I have a couple pages here. Okay, so I, a little bit about my background. I am a licensed healthcare professional. In addition, I am professionally trained to work with children on proper breathing techniques and to reduce the negative lifelong effects of mouth breathing which can be brought on from mask use. However, I'm not going to present any of the numerous studies on how detrimental improper mouth breathing patterns, patterns are for the developing child's brain. I'm coming to you tonight as a concerned mother of two children in this district. Let me start off by saying that you guys are working backwards. You as a school board are trying to use a piece of cloth on the faces of our children without first doing all that can be done with environmental and administrative controls. Instead of starting off with the least invasive measures for COVID safety, you have jumped right into the most controversial, divisive, and polarizing topics in recent times, masking our healthy children. Here are some very basic, common sense things that we can implement to reduce COVID in the schools without a piece of cloth over the faces of our kids. One, test close contacts in the morning. Have them isolated from other classmates until the nurse has completed testing. Testing them in the middle of the day or at the end of the day is simply inefficient and foolish at stopping the spread. Install humidifiers in all the classrooms. Multiple studies show respiratory illness decreases in humidity levels between 40 and 60 percent. This is such a simple, yet effective way to reduce transmission in the schools. Have it scheduled for hand washing, hand sanitizing, and ensure it's checked off by the teacher and each student. I know for a fact that my child goes from recess to lunch without being required to wash her hands. It is suggested but not enforced. If you can't force them to wash their hands, you must not be capable of enforcing masks. Don't allow personal items to be shared in the classroom. I realize this is not a fail-proof idea, however, it can be encouraged and localized on a regular basis as I remind all the students. Sanitize door handles, desks, countertops, high-traffic areas throughout the day. Yet again, it's an easy, effective, common sense approach. However, how many times a day is this actually getting done? Is it ever being done? Don't have enough employees to do this? Hire someone else to do this, just like you hired someone to help administer rapid tests for COVID. Quit leaving the task up to our elementary students. Is it really the responsibility of a child to be sure that disinfecting solution instructions are properly followed? No. Prioritize ventilation. Did you know that according to the CDC, by opening windows, doors, using fans, this resulted in 35 percent lower incidence of COVID? In combination with HEPA filtration, there was a 48 percent lower incidence of COVID in schools. Grant money was given to the school district by the state. Consider using some of it to purchase portable air purifiers. Provide respiratory adequate training to each student and employee in the district. How to cover a sneeze and a cough. This is especially important in elementary schools. Don't just tell them through the loudspeaker, show them and teach them like you would any other curriculum. I can provide you with several CDC recommendations for environmental and administrative controls to reduce COVID. It would be interesting to walk through the schools and see how many of these recommendations are actually being put into place, or is a school board just focusing on one recommendation, masks, and forgetting about the numerous non-invasive recommendations? You can't pick and choose when you want to take guidance from the CDC and when you don't want to. Here are two questions I want the board to consider. Are masks the problem, or is the core execution of existing protocols the problem? For example, a teacher or somebody in the class test positive, parents were never notified of the exposure, not by the school, not by the health department, nobody. Masks are not the solution for poor leadership or poor execution of protocols. Are we planning to shut down music programs? Or are we going to, there are all kinds of society for ten that putting a hole in a mask to play an instrument is acceptable? Teachers are mandated reporters when it comes to reporting suspected child abuse. Did you know that in abuse of a child, the most common side is the head and neck, particularly the face? If you're covering up a child's face, this decreases the ability for teachers to recognize the signs of abuse. Is this acceptable to you? Is a dirty mask still effective at reducing the spread of COVID if it's covered with excretions due to improper handling or repeated touching? Or is it just an optical illusion of safety at that point? I'm almost done. In an American Academy of Pediatrics publication, there's a study that shows that North Carolina, over a period of nine weeks, 11 participating school districts had greater than 90,000 students and staff attend school in person. Among these students and staff, 773 community-acquired COVID infections were documented by molecular testing. Guess how many instances of child-to-adult transmission of COVID were reported in schools? Zero. So this leads me to question, are students spreading it, or is it the adults in the school spreading it? If a mask mandate is passed, are we gonna continue testing the students at the same rate? Or are you gonna change your protocol by not testing as many students and by default having a lower number of cases? If you change your diagnostic criteria process, you are skewing the data to get the results that you're looking for. What is the end goal? With new variants and vaccine effectiveness decreasing, COVID isn't going anywhere. What you are going to do if you enforce mask mandates is not sustainable. Are you wanting to mask the children for the rest of their school years to indoctrinate them with the fear of breathing fresh air? You cannot outsmart biology or your own immune system with a mask. Have you went to the teachers, principals, and parents at the schools to see what they would like to have done? I know for a fact several school employees are not in favor of mask mandate but are too scared to speak out against it in fear of retaliation. It is a slippery slope when publicly funded schools start to act like medical providers and start performing diagnostic tests without proper informed consent. The consent form that parents were asked to sign for testing is likely illegal and a liability to the school if it were to go to court, FYI. In conclusion, I present an actionable recommendation that can be put into place, most of them immediately before we decide to move forth with a very polarizing mandate. As a reminder, this is my last sentence, or my last paragraph, we know the parents, not you. You are public servants, you are not our primary care physicians. Parents do not need to ask you for permission on how to raise our children or how to make medical decisions for them. By mandating health decisions, you are very close to, by definition, practicing medicine without a license. I will leave you with a quote from our governor that she made today regarding school districts that are not enforcing mask mandates. This is what she said. I would turn to every parent in the state of Kansas and say, "You can. It's your kid. If you want to put a mask on your kid, regardless of whether or not it's required, please do." And I agree, every parent has a choice. It's their kid after all, or does it not go both ways?
Thank you.
Mrs. Lawrence, will you introduce yourself? I'm sorry, will you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Karen Weber. Sarah Lawrence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Someone else want to speak to the board at this time?
Jared Wilson with American Mask Alliance. Not gonna talk to you today about masks. I'm sure that a lot of people have already talked to you about it. But what I'd like to talk to you about, that you know that we are here to help, we do have disinfectant that is superior to all the other disinfectants you find on the market. The problem with most disinfectants is, how can you put them down and they dry, they're not near as effective, if effective at all? We have a solution where it stays, once it dries, it's still effective, and we find it, we're, studies have found it effective for several months afterwards. Results of less treatment, better coverage, keeping the kids safer. Just wanna let you guys know, American Mask Alliance is here for you. We have the solution for you. I have some documentation I'd love to give you after the meeting concludes. I thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is interested in speaking to the board this evening?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We certainly thank you for your service to our community. I am Pastor Paul Carr at the Friends Baptist Church here in Wellington. On last week, on this past weekend, I was inundated with calls from concerned parents and grandparents. On third Sunday of last month, we had our monthly demo. One of the young men who's in the high schools here was there. He was happy, he was healthy, and he was safe. On this past weekend, I learned that on his first week back to school... On this past weekend, I learned that on his first week back to school, he contracted the COVID virus. He took it home and he gave it to his mother. On that, on Sunday before last, his two-year-old niece was sitting right along with me. This past week, she was placed in the hospital with high temperatures and is still there. And she is now suffering because there was no mask mandate. Now, I can understand when people say that there are safer ways to do it, but I need you to understand that your rights ends where mine's begin. Parents who do not want to have their children wear masks, that is something that they can do. But you need to understand also that the rights of the other children who want to wear masks is compromised. You must learn that your, as I said, your rights ends where mine's begin. And we don't want COVID. We don't want our children to be sick with it. And it's about time that we learn to understand that we are the keepers of our children. Our children deserve to grow up happy, healthy, and safe. And when they are placed in situations where they cannot remain safe, then that's where you come in. You are the ones that make the decisions as far as what goes on with our children in schools. Our children must remain safe. Yours is to make sure that they are educated. Our, as parents and teachers and grandparents, it's our job to make sure that they remain safe. And when all of that is done, then guess who has to deal with? Children and families who are sick. The clergy. We're out here on the front line. We have to deal with these situations. We have to look in the face of the parents and the children as they are sick and possibly dying. So it's time that, I don't know who does not want to have a mask mandate and really don't care, but it is time that we man up and stand up for the rights of our children and do what is right for our children and this community. All of last year, we never shut down. Because guess what? We took safety precautions first of all, and then when the vaccination was available, we took it. Those who don't want to take the vaccination, that's your right. Those who don't want to wear a mask, that's your right. But I want to consider the rights of the children and those who want to remain safe. It's time to do the right thing, make sure that there is a mask mandate in place, and do it today. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
I'm Jessica Seeliger. I'm the mother of Harper in sixth grade and Holden, who is in third grade at Eisenhower. A year ago, I stood right here in front of all of you and asked that you follow the recommendation of our local medical professionals, and I'm talking medical doctors, R and D, and health officials, when making decisions regarding our children during the current public health crisis. A year ago, you thankfully did just that, and we made it an entire school year with full, with few classrooms shut down, no major outbreaks, no closures, and very few missed events. While my husband and I, along with many friends we've spoken to over the last two weeks, have questioned what advice was actually given to the board before the consideration and writing and approving of the first safety and operations plan was put into place, there's no need to Monday morning quarterback where we've been. So I stand in front of you again tonight, asking again, please take part, the advice of our medical professionals, the doctors and nurses working in this district, the people in our community with firsthand knowledge of what this virus is doing to our district and the people in it. Please seek advice from those with the education, knowledge, facts, understanding, and that understand the medical facts, as to what we can do to help our kids and our staff stay safe and in school. Please listen to those who can read and understand medical research and validate studies and medical studies and medical essays, and not just regurgitate a mess that they read online or political propaganda. And if that advice is not enough, look at your own unintended experiment. Last year, masks, distancing, cohorts, they all worked. All things the CDC recommends, all things, including masks, that the CDC recommends. It kept our kids in school and learning. This year, a simple loose recommendation got us eight days in statewide headlines. Don't just learn from this year's mistakes, learn from last year's successes. I also want to take a minute to thank Larry for asking the questions at the last meeting and being the only no vote. Feel like you really cared, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank Holly publicly. I've had two kids in quarantine already. She's been there, she's working her tail off, she's answering questions at nine o'clock at night. She's in early Saturday morning making most phone calls. She is right there working with parents, and she deserves a big thank you from the whole district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Megan Allinger. I have a first grader at Kennedy and a fifth grader at Eisenhower. I want to personally thank all of you for the tough decisions you've had to make this past year, particularly regarding the safety of our students. I wouldn't want to trade places with any of you. Now onto the reason that we're all here. We can all sit here and argue about what we think is best or what the current recommendations are, but the truth is, kids will be kids. Implementing a mask policy, especially in elementary, is, in my opinion, ineffective and ultimately demoralizing. I can speak from personal experience in that my child does not wear her mask correctly, nor would I expect her to at six years old. She is continually tugging on it, wearing it below her nose, and pulling it under her mouth when she's telling a story so she can make sure that she gets her point across more clearly. Can you blame her? She's a kid. I know she isn't the only kid who wears her mask like this, so tell me, how is that effective? She has spent her entire school career in a mask, except for a whole eight days in August eighth. Can you imagine that as a young kid? She was ecstatic to be going to first grade this year mask-free. She couldn't wait to see all her friends' smiles without a mask on her, her or his face. How sad that a six-year-old has to think like this. Now to imagine that I may have to potentially tell her we're going to dig those masks out from last school year and put them on again just breaks my heart. Additionally, my daughter has no concept of personal space. Again, she's six. She loves to hug her friends, her teachers, her principal, really, everybody. I do not want that gentle quality taken away from her. It is what makes her hurt. So if the board votes to change to a mask policy or even to implement more strict social distancing guidelines, she will not thrive like she is now. Furthermore, my household was able to witness the district operation and safety plan firsthand via exposure at Eisenhower with my stepdaughter. Wow. What a huge disservice to the district, by the district's duty, by not being more prepared. We chose to have her continue to attend school by receiving the antigen test. She informed her father and I that the first morning she wasn't pulled from class until after 9:00 AM for her test, and the second day, it was even later than that. Additionally, she was allowed to go back to class prior to receiving her test result. Why are students allowed to go to class prior to being tested and then to go back to class before receiving their test results? What if she would have received a positive test and exposed her classmates? If testing was in the safety plan, why would there isolation accommodations for these students awaiting a test and the results? I encourage you all to look at the events of the first eight days of school and question if it was really a mask issue, or if it was an issue of being more prepared with testing and isolating those exposed students and staff to decrease the spread of the virus. I also urge you to implement a more effective means to isolate those exposed students awaiting a test, as well as the results, to hinder potentially exposing more students and staff members. As always, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else interested in speaking to the board this evening? Yeah? Okay. Jason?
Nope, we're here. Just taking some notes there, so we'll start with that. Okay, so if there's nobody else that wants to speak to the board, the first item in our agenda following recognition of patrons is discussion item in the district safety operation plan.
Yes, thank you. The district has worked to make adjustments to the safety and operation plan. I will read that, however, if it is approved later tonight, and obviously this will be sent out to the public, but this is really up for discussion prior to going to action if the board is interested in taking action this evening. We are interested in going to a leveled masking plan. We have four criteria that we would like to look at in order to decide whether masking will be going on in the district at a certain time. So we're going to look at the community gaining criteria, student absenteeism, daily testing, and positive new cases per week in the district. If, if within those criteria, the numbers are above where we would like them to be, then we would stay with requiring masks in schools. When, if it fell below those specific criteria, then we would go to a recommended status and make it not a required at that time, but still highly recommended to wear masks at that time. Students, as we continue our testing program, which I will discuss here in a minute, as far as masking, students who are in the testing program or in quarantine during that time would be required to wear masks during that time since they were a close contact in order to get into that testing program. We would go back to, and we've done a little bit of this, but not as much as we will go back to going into small groups or cohorts of five or less within areas where we, it's difficult to social distance, and then also use social distancing strategies, seating charts type situation during our lunch periods to help identify where potential issues are and to try to keep kids safe. We are planning to increase our testing staff to, to start out in each building throughout the district, and then if we have, if we do have hotter buildings that have more cases or more close contacts across the district, then those six people would, would work the entire district and get it. If they were finished with their school in the morning, they would go on to a school that has more cases than need tested and put all of that staff together until everyone is tested in the district. We will continue to work on that, that testing program until we feel that it is, it is in a better space than it was prior to. And as far as CAESH, CAESH is recommending for, actually requiring for all, anyone who's in athletics or activities, if they do have a positive test, then they would require a doctor's release to resume athletic activities, and so that would be in place. Those are the major changes, and that would obviously continue to be monitored by the district, and then we would continue to bring that back to you and any adjustments to be made at future board meetings. So those are the, those are the main changes for, for school starting on Tuesday, and so that is up for discussion this evening.
Hey, Adam, this is something that I just thought of listening to the parents talk. If we implement a mask mandate, what are the students going to do when they go to an away extracurricular activity? Are we going to be, require them to wear masks at all times when they're at a school that doesn't have a mask mandate? I didn't see it anywhere in the protocol.
Yep. I'll let Mr. Smith who's here this evening, I'll let him address that real quick.
We would go back to what we did last year. Active students playing in games would, would be allowed not to mask up, but we would stay masked up. Obviously, on the bus, we already were doing that, trips and vans, but if they're on the sideline or, you know, in lock rooms or things like that, they would, they would be unmasked if our school, we would follow last year's PAESH guidelines. They would be unmasked to actively play as, as they were last year.
So are we going to have vans in and not have all of them go on a bus? Or if we're going to go back to what we did last year?
We have, we have not made an official recommendation to, to spread students out on the bus, just to have masking on the buses at this time.
I think that's something that we need to discuss, and if we're going to look at doing a mask mandate and kind of go back to what we did at the beginning of last year.
Yep. Does anybody else on the board want to discuss that piece?
Adam, on the testing, you're going to try to, the people are efficient with it. Is there more than once, you know, that we're too slow?
Yes, it's, it is, it has actually been a problem in a lot of districts, as a matter as the factor, and this has got brought up this evening, as far as students coming in in the morning and, you know, how much time it takes for them to get tested before they get to class. There's a trade-off there because, you know, either they're isolated, like, like someone said, and then they go in for testing. It's a matter of how fast that can get done, which obviously depends on how many close contacts and all that that we have in that particular school. We have been, we've been weighing that and trying to figure, this is obviously the first year we've ever done this, and so we've been trying to increase that as we go. And so we started with one plan, and now we want to increase that plan and continue to try to make it better. This is our first time doing it. I can't promise that it's going to be absolutely perfect, but I can promise that we'll continue to adjust as we are now to make that happen.
When I asked the question about why, I asked you why they were waiting till the end of the day to be tested. You, I understood you, right? I think you said because they needed that time for them to, like incubation period or time?
When, and Holly could, Holly could address this. On our first plan, we didn't, we did not have the plan to test everybody before they went to class. Our plan was to test them once a day, and so that's why people were getting tested at different times of the day. We did not have the plan to test everybody before they go to class. That was not part of it, so we're not saying that that was ever a part of this. But Holly, I don't know if you want to address that at all as far as what we, our original thoughts on that and discussions you've had.
So what we were talking about on that incubation period was, excuse me, if we test somebody, it's, part of what was taking so long is because when we had so many cases that we originally did not have that tester, it was taking us that long to get to all of those schools. I mean, we started at eight in the morning and tested nonstop and did not get done until three in the afternoon. So no, we did not want to wait until three in the afternoon to test people. We were testing back-to-back, nonstop, all day long. So we didn't purposely wait until the afternoon, but what we were talking about with that incubation period is if, say on Monday, because of the numbers, we didn't get to somebody till two o'clock in the afternoon. If we then turned around the next day and tested them at eight in the morning, that doesn't necessarily give them that long of incubation period because you want to get their viral load up so they may test negative one day, and then that next day, you give them that time to have that viral load up to where they would test positive. Because when they do test positive, you actually go back 48 hours to when they were tested. Does that make sense to us? So no, we would love to get them all tested first thing in the morning for less than the chance of exposure, but you kind of want them to test about the same time every day so that you're, have a close to 24-hour period in between their testing, so your chance of catching that positive as quickly as possible the next day. the next day.
So like I said, we are, we are with, starting on Tuesday, as long as we are all set up, which we're planning to be, we will be going from what we had originally planned, which was, I will tell you, I'm not going to stand up here and say anything different, but we, the snowball that we received on the number of positive cases in close contact was not what we expected when school started. We were set up for a testing program, we were not staffed efficiently for what we got whenever that happened. That is, that, we were not expecting that. So because we were not expecting it, that's why it took so long throughout the day to make that happen. And so we are increasing that to six people and trying to see if that will keep up with the demand of what we're seeing when it come back.
I do just want to say, I was a little bit offended without even remember who said it, that we don't care because we weren't ready and we started without masks. I'm just going to explain my own reason for starting without a mask. It's because most of us all summer long went without a mask, and it was a great feeling. And lots of the students that did get vaccinated, they did so maybe a little, I'm sure if it was the right thing to do or not, but they did so thinking, okay, if I get vaccinated, I won't have to wear a mask. And on August, we started school August 17th, and I'm not quite sure the date of our meeting, but it was before that, there weren't the numbers. And so in my opinion, it was better to let the students start at least feeling good and normal and positive instead of that ho-hum drum negative that they'd gone through all year, knowing that if a mask mandate was going to be the way we were going to go, that could be zoned up in a heartbeat. So I just want to explain, nobody cares about these kids as, I mean, we all care about these kids. I'm not going to, you know, say anything about that, but I just wanted to speak my personal reason why I thought that it wasn't because I didn't care about these kids.
Holly, how many people do we have testing the students?
As of today, we have four. I had two that I tried to hire and they declined. So we have put the job, posted it back out to try to hire two more so that we can station one in each school.
Okay.
And on Thursday, we, we had just hired our third one, she was not trained yet.
Okay, and then Adam, can you go over the disinfecting and cleaning practices that we do at the school and who's monitoring that to make sure it gets done properly?
Sure. Mister, Mister Adams, who's our director of operations, actually oversees that with the top. His main discussions are with the principals, and then they are obviously over their custodial staff. Mister Adams is also over the maintenance crew, and so works through all the COVID disinfectant practices that were, they were originally trained in last year and try to continue those practices.
Are we still doing that on a daily basis after school?
Yes, they, yes, they go through, they have a checklist that they have to go through and make, and make all that happen, so.
Okay, and then on my prior question about the vans, this goes out to the board. I'd like to know where you guys kind of sit on that because that could be another potential problem of the kids being together. I know they're being tested and everything, but I think that would be another safety protocol.
I don't think we have enough vans to take everybody everywhere. I think last year, if I'm thinking right, we just, just took more, we got to take more buses because the students were... Oh, I thought you were just saying...
No, 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 I'm talking about getting...
Yeah, but last year, we had, we, we had two buses for everyone, and the kids were just distanced. I don't know that we have enough drivers. It could be, I, I know throughout the area that they're struggling with that.
Yeah, I, I understand, but if we...
I know.
If we're trying to control this, and we're trying to, people are saying to go back to what we did last year. That was something that we did last year and have worked. I think if we keep getting kids closer and closer and we have another COVID outbreak, are we doing the right thing?
Right.
By not doing it, that, and...
I know, I know, I, I agree. I agree with you, but I also want, you know, kids on the bus are supposed to be masks, wear their masks. And the bus driver is driving the bus, and he's not going to be the mask police.
Right.
And I understand totally, we're little kids.
All right, sure.
However, those older kids, if they want to participate in athletics, they need to be responsible and wear those masks on that bus.
Right, and I think, I think you said the, the key word is, is we all got to be responsible and respect each other, and maybe we kind of got away from that, and that's why we're having an outbreak. And I don't know, I haven't been into the school to see exactly what all has been going on, but we're at this point, and, you know, we all want the safety of the kids, so, you know, do we, do we go back to where we were last year on, on social distancing, the mask, the more buses? Obviously, if we don't have the drivers, you know, that's something I think we need to discuss, so that, that's all.
I agree with you, Chris. We basically just need to go back to how we were doing it last year, you know, with the more buses, if we could do it. But we need to do what we were doing last year at the end of the year, basically.
Luke, would you mind discussing transportation last year versus issue?
Last year, we did use vans to go on to small trips like tennis tournaments or golf tournaments. That's basically like a cohort, you know, like you're sitting together in a classroom, there's a group of five or six students, you know, obviously they're together, they're in masks. So we did not do any social distancing in vans, because we kind of cohorted them like we were doing in the classroom. We did try to use a bigger van if there was only four or five kids going to spread them out a little bit, but it's impossible to social distance in a van. And it's also tough to take a bus for six kids to a golf tournament. You know, that's, but so for the big trips, we did have one kid per seat. And then again, we did have to double our buses, which we, we are fighting even with our regular schedule, especially Thursdays in the fall are very busy. A lot of events, middle school and high school, they all happen in the fall as an out of town. That is tough, but I mean, we did go back to, and obviously we, you know, we did seating charts on buses as well, that kind of stuff. But we did use vans last year, and they were not socially distancing the van. And again, one kid per seat bus for most of the year until we came back full in March, and then we, then we doubled up in seats. Always in masks and seating charts.
I have a question. So if the student is a close contact and considered in quarantine but testing to stay in school, what happens if they're in sports? So do they still get to play sports if it requires them to take a mask off to play?
Yes, we, we were allowing, we were allowing athletics and activities for those who were testing negative in the, in the quarantine process, the testing process.
What did we do? I do like, oh, quite a few things that Miss Lawrence mentioned. What did we do for, like ventilation? And I just saw, you know, all the time you see on the news, just things that are adding for ventilation, and I know nothing about that.
Yep.
And I know there was COVID money, and I don't remember a discussion about any kind of changes in that process of ventilation.
Last year, we spent quite a bit of money on, it was much more on the cleaning, disinfecting side of things. That has been a discussion this year for, with, with Esser funds that you were talking about, about doing more ventilation and air purification type things with our, with our money for this year. So that's been in discussion right now. But last year was very much, we spent money on the foggers and some of the much more disinfecting things. So we did last year.
The numbers, I'm trying to find the new thing, the numbers in that, where did we come up with the numbers?
Oh, the numbers on the, on the criteria?
On the new unit.
Good, so the, the numbers for the community gating criteria and the student absenteeism is, are both numbers that were directly off of the gating criteria from last year. That was part of KDHE's and KSBD's gating criteria from last year, that's where we took that. And then the, the daily testing and the positive new cases were taken from our, our medical staff's view on what they've seen over the last couple of years as far as where they feel like it would be a safe environment for students to be. And I don't know, Holly, I don't know if you want to explain anymore on that, but...
So like where it says, the total number across the district are more than the following criteria, face masks will be required while inside 353.
Yep.
So if the number of students in the district is less than 3% absent, then we have to wear a mask. And if you have to test less than 50 students, I'll read this backwards, which is...
There are less than 50 students being tested, is what that means. We can reword that?
Okay, that's when they're highly recommended, if...
If it's lower than that, yes.
If you test less than 50 students, there's less than four positive cases in the whole district.
Yep.
Those just always, like, you might as well say we're always going to wear a mask.
Well, and, and if the board wants to change that, then you're welcome to. That is what we are recommending to you, based off of what we have.
So our whole health team committed to putting this together?
Holly spoke to, with our health panel after we put this together to, to discuss this, yes.
Did you guys all get together, or is it just phone calls?
It's, it's phone calls, yes.
Yeah. It's just like, and I'm probably talking way too much, but I just really have a lot to say, but it's like when we get a phone call the other night, and I, I said this to you, Adam, but I just, I just kind of want to say it to everybody else. When I get a phone call at nine thirty at night asking me about something this major, I wouldn't know what to, I, I am not going to take one of those again because if it's that important, I think that we're, we're Wellington, Kansas, we all live within five minutes of central office practically. We should never get together and make that decision. There's a lot to be said for, you know, brainstorming, sharing, discussing than just a phone call saying, you know, I, I just don't like, we made that decision on graduation two years ago, and I'm not saying it would be any different, but I would prefer if we have any kind of decisions like that to be made, we get together, we're called together.
How would that have worked? Like, I was, I was in Wichita, I got a phone call, so how could I?
Well, yeah, I, you know, I don't know.
I mean, I think we did the best we could, but the timeframe...
But I'm just saying, you know, I'm not comfortable doing it. That's my opinion.
So I can explain what happened if, if...
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I understand it was, but I also, you know, just asking you the question before, the decision that we were outbreak schools, those three schools, was made by the health department.
It was recommended.
Recommended by the health department, and we all sitting here now, last year about this time, we had trouble with the health department recommendations. So we had this team of doctors and everyone out here, there were lots of people out here who mentioned we should listen to our doctors. Had nothing to do with decisions or putting this together or anything that done or something. Is that making sense?
I don't...
No.
Those recommendations.
That's a decision the other night to cancel school, yeah.
Yes.
I, I misunderstood, because I thought you said this was, they looked at this after it was put together. Is that why, Holly? Did the team, did our medical team help put this together?
Did what?
Did our medical team help put...
So I called the medical team to see what they, what they wanted to discuss with the board. So the medical team would like them in masks, everyone in masks when they come back. So in order to get them in masks, if we need to have some stipulations and possibly have things where we could get them out of masks at some point in time, they are willing to give a little bit and be able to get them out of masks. So this was their way of saying, okay, if we have to have a point in time where we can get them back out of masks, then that's what they're willing to do. They would like to have them in masks and say, we're masking up the one or two to mask the people safe.
But they didn't sit down and help make this plan.
That, like the chart?
Well, the whole plan. They, they saw these four things and said, yeah, that looks good.
They did not specifically see those four things. They said that they want them in masks. When I called them back and said, how, what do you think about a tiered system if we go off of this? They said, if, if we cannot have them in masks, then yes, that a tiered system is the next step.
So yes, we, we do make phone calls to our medical panel. Obviously, with all this going on in the world, medical staff are very busy. And so we, we do not have meetings where we sit down with all of them. It is very much calling around and getting their opinion because they're very busy people. And we really appreciate them supporting us, giving us their opinion on things, and that is what we ask for. We also have our medical staff right here in the district that has good conversations with them because they're all trained in that area. So we, we feel comfortable with that. We also feel like we are honoring and respecting their workload and all the things they have going on. And so that's how the system is, so.
So that may be partially my fault. When Adam first reached out to me, came up to us, we wanted to do a mask mandate. I wanted, I've talked to several people who are sitting in the audience right now, and I just, I kind of wanted to find some middle ground. I don't know if this is middle ground or not. I don't know if it's quite far enough to find the middle ground, but it's a step in the right direction. That's, I think, when Adam probably reached back up to Holly and asked for kind of a tiered system, just to kind of put that in front of us to see if that's something we're interested in looking at. That's kind of what this is, is that tiered system. And it, it may not be far enough on a tiered system, but it's a little bit of a step in the right direction to compromise between. Like or not, this is pretty much a 50/50 split across the community, and we got to drive from this point on someplace.
Is there any way to do it by building? Do these numbers, you know, by building, so you're not?
It's, it's...
I know, I think that's what, because I always saw Derby, but that's where my family is at. The other part of my family is in Derby, and that's what they're doing, by building. That way you don't have everybody all the time. Is there a way, is there a way that we could look at something like that?
If, if the majority of the board would like that, then we would be happy to put that in place.
Holly, did they ever, I know you didn't test last year, but at any time during last year, were we less than four cases in the district?
Absolutely.
We, we were?
Are you talking about new cases weekly? Because that's what we're using, with new cases weekly.
So you're, well, the way I'm reading it is at any given time, if there's four cases in the district, we have to have a mask.
No, that's four new cases weekly.
Oh, I'm reading less than four cases, so we're...
Yeah, four new cases.
We can change that wording. I, I probably put that down, I don't know if that's...
Okay, maybe, I don't have, I don't...
But even four cases, yes, we were even less than four cases recently.
And that was in the entire district?
Yes.
Okay. I am interested in if we're going to do something like that to have it per building, not the district, because that way we're not shutting down the entire district or, you know, you know...
Sure.
Because we talked about we're doing it one school at a time.
Yes, and, and that was the, that was the issue the other night with, with the way that rolled out. I told the board last year that my full intention at all times was to, if we had to do a shutdown because of an outbreak, then we would, we would do that by building. Unfortunately, we had our three biggest buildings going and very much saw the connections between those families and other buildings, and we thought, we just thought we were headed for a district outbreak at that time with the number of students that were involved. And so that's why we made the district decision. That is not a decision that I want to make normally if we ever have to do that again, which I really hope not to do that again with, with new, a new system. But if that had been to happen again, it is still the intent to do it by building if at all possible.
I, I remember when we made the decision to shut down the whole district, the third thinking was it would spread. I, uh, I remember when we made the decision to shut down the whole district, the third thinking was it would spread pretty quickly anyway. Uh, if we do it building by building, so you're saying that, say, a portion of the school needs this criteria, then they would not have to wear a mask, but the other schools would? Is that the way you see it?
No, I could not, I said, she's- I don't think-
I, I guess I'm not seeing it that way, um, because you have family members that would be in other schools. I, I, I just think they, I, I just, that's the problem with putting it in as a building because of all of the other, you know, high school, middle school.
'Cause they've got brothers in other schools.
They've got brothers and sisters in other schools.
So, so I think the problem with that is you're using, uh, countywide numbers, and then you're gonna assign, assess that to one building. I think that, I'm not sure, I can see the absenteeism in the, that building, but then you're using the criteria from the other three categories. And I think it would be, it's gonna be a lot of work to try to decipher. I mean, I love the idea of only doing, shutting, uh, masking per building, but I don't know how to regulate that with this formula.
Maybe, maybe we can tweak that fourth one.
Uh, I'm just gonna be honest with you, this does not make any sense to me, and I, I don't understa- I don't think anybody is gonna understand this out in the public, because if we're talk, we've gotta talk building by building, because if we're gonna let these students who are close contacts go play sports in another team, uh, in another district, without a mask on, and not be considered contagious, we cannot hold one school accountable to another school because they're siblings and ones, we can't do that. It has to be, we're, we're gonna have to separate each school and do it that way, because we'll never get out the mask if-
What, Carol? I know, it's completely contradictory.
Okay, so is the consensus, or sorry, the majority of the board interested in that going building by building, four masks?
I don't know. I don't see how.
I, I see what you said, Tom, but I don't know how that works with the counting. The first criteria being the counting by-
You'd have to, you know, there's less than fifty students likely being tested, that, you know, what if fifty more students are in one's? Whatever, it's too difficult.
Yeah, if we're gonna do building by building, we would have to change those.
It would have to be a percentage of the students being tested in that, in that building.
Yeah, this was set up for district-wide, so we would have to change, we would have to redo that criteria if we were doing that in that building.
Then obviously, if we're gonna try to restart the school, we, we, we need to start with this then, and then tweak the per building idea, because we don't have enough time to per, we, we can't make that tonight while we're sitting here. That, that will turn- It's not, it's not about that, right?
And I can, I can bring this back to you. And we have a September meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, and I can bring this back to you at that time for tweaks like that if you're interested.
Okay, here's just how A school's doing it. These numbers wouldn't work because the school's much larger, but, um, green would be mask optional. Zero to one point ninety-nine percent of the school building out due to staff and student positive cases in total quarantine numbers. Yellow is mask strongly encouraged, that's two to five point ninety-nine percent of the school building out due to staff and student positive cases in total quarantine numbers. And then red, mask required, six percent are out, but of course, I'm, that's a much larger school, so, um, but- Yeah, it's, it is an example of how it can be done.
Do you take any more questions? I'm sorry to interrupt, but you've been shouting back and forth with the county, county health person here.
Okay.
Hi.
I think I don't need to interrupt you guys, I can ask, like-
It's, it's just another thought, but I, I thought I was going upstream here, but what about just temperatures at the door? As far as actively displaying symptoms? Wouldn't that be a reasonable enough decision to see who's sick enough to send home? I would like to just see, I, I don't know for all your efforts, but any outcome will not result in everybody getting it eventually. We can dance around and hope it goes better, but in the end, it's a highly contagious respiratory disease. I don't see any other outcome than they all eventually get it. My family got it, they quarantined for two weeks, it sucked, I mean, it's a booger. Um, I mean, take three buses, put kids on top, but do you ever see an end to this? Uh, I'm happy that you're least interested in having, uh, you know, mask-free areas, but, uh, I just don't see how my, my child can learn without a mask, learn to read, I got a kindergarten. Instead of debating this, I don't see how she can understand how to spell, how to read, how to do math, social cues without seeing the teacher's face. So we sent her to the Christian Academy, uh, do you offer rebates on my tax dollars? So I can help pay for this fancy school? I, I've got a per, I've got a child in MIB school I oversee? Man, that's a bummer, to wear a mask every single day, all day long, and in the end, she's already been exposed. We all stayed home, we recovered, you know? Can we maybe have all the parents in the district vote on this plan versus just letting the parents decide on masks? Is that an option?
Then you don't need a school.
Well, I, I guess you're taking, you're taking recommendations from the community, you know?
I mean, I'm sorry to point out that, that's rude of me.
She works for us, Josh.
All right, I'm just, I was hoping to find common ground, I wanted to really hear you guys out, 'cause it's entirely possible I'm wrong, but it's just how I feel about this. And as a taxpayer and as a parent, I just wanted to come here and speak to you face to face and see if maybe we could find some common ground here. Otherwise, we might have to look at other schooling options.
So- Well, the band thing-
Is any, is anybody close, if I'm completely wrong, I'll just leave you all alone and start, you know, shopping around for schools, I guess? If we're just gonna, they're just gonna be on the laptops all day long in my living room? I might as well get my own laptop, get my own homeschooling program. What else can I sell on it that's not in-person school every day in a learning environment?
Thanks, Josh.
We all got a chance to get a vaccine, we can wear a space helmet, whatever, I'm-
Well, that's what I want too, is the main thing, we gotta get, get them back in school again. That's the main thing. We just gotta figure out the best way to do it.
Sure.
I think, I think everybody sitting up here feels that same way. I mean, that's the whole reason we're here tonight, is to try to get people back in school.
You know, when, when we're in a pandemic, um, the community wants a board full of medical experts, and when state scores are down, they want a board full of educators, and, uh, when the, when the boiler breaks, they want a board full of HVAC technicians. But unfortunately, we're just people, we're, none of us are all of those things. You know, I, I don't like wearing masks, I, I have to be told three or four times to put a mask on at my customers. You know, if it gets us back in school, I'm, I say we gotta do it, and then we can tweak the per building. Uh, I don't wanna be back on the news for trying the same thing and shutting the school down again, so I, I feel that we have to open with this, just to get the school started, and then we can work on it for our building masking mandate. It's my, my theory.
But if they're gonna do, you know, if we're gonna say all masks, that's the way the majority thinks, I would certainly rather see per building, so at least, it's so true about kindergarten, first graders trying to read and hear phonics in a mask. I mean, I could hardly understand what Adam's saying, and no offense or anything, but I mean, if we could do it building by building, then maybe those will, you can't learn to read, you just can't with this, talking with a mask. And I've got a family member that is so no mask, and so I've done tons and tons and tons of research. And it's like, I just said many times lately, you can find information for masks that are from doctors, that are from scientists, that are from the most educated people, and you can find, you know, um, schools that almost prove that. But you can also hear from doctors. It, you know, highly, you know, intelligent doctors, scientists, whatever, but say the exact opposite. So there's no, nobody's right or wrong. Um, I, I, I could go for a mask if it would be building by building, but, um, I personally, not for everybody wearing a mask every single day. I think these numbers, I don't like these numbers on here at all. Um, and there are people in our community that are telling us that we should make our kids wear masks when they aren't, and that doesn't sit very good, you know, when they walk into church without a mask and they're telling us to wear masks. You know, you gotta walk the walk. I'll shut up, guys.
Well, we already talked about the difficulty of going building by building, but I, I agree with Tom. I'd, I'd like this to be the, the start, and we can tweak it later on. I totally agree with you, it's, you know, a kid trying to learn how to read, I know, needs a teacher. But these are the times we're in right now.
No, well, I just want the audience to know, well, not everybody knows, but we know, or I think I know. We won't be out of school on laptops, because the state says we can only, um, we can only be at home on a laptop learning forty hours, is that right?
Yes.
Only for forty hours, so that's not many, very many hours. So kids are gonna be in school, and the state says we have to, which is great. I just, I just wanted to tell people that, 'cause there's no way we're gonna do that again, be home, I just wanted to let you know.
They were home last week, so-
Yeah, I know, but it's just, they can't be, but I know that counts as part of the four hours, so-
There you go, there's forty, so it's be back in school now, that's the side of the-
It's a consensus amongst the board that we're gonna, that we need to do something, or are we gonna just keep doing what we've been doing? 'Cause I think that's kinda what Adam's needing, his little direction here. Uh, we've got a, a plan in front of us, it is not a perfect plan. There's nobody in this room that's gonna say it's a perfect plan, it is gonna have to constantly look at. Uh, this is a moving target, and we saw that last year. It had to be moved multiple times to adapt to what we're dealing with. We got, Adam kinda admitted, we got, we got hit pretty hard right there at first, nobody expected that, and maybe we should've. I, I don't know, I don't, I think the medical community as a whole, I mean, I've got people that are out of work right now that cannot get tested without going out of city. Uh, I don't know if they're checking at the right spot or not, but that's what they're telling me, is that they can't get the testing that they need in town. So I think everybody's getting hit hard and, uh, a little bit unexpected. So again, I don't think this is a perfect plan, but keeping kids home is not the answer.
No.
So we gotta get kids back in school. Uh, if this is a, a step that we can take in that direction with the idea of continually revising it, it's not just gonna be, uh, you know, every six months, I think this needs to be looked at on a monthly basis if I'm wrong.
Agreed.
Uh, and I, I think when we do, I, I'm, I'm with Tom, I'm with a lot of people that have spoke, I'm, I'm not a huge mask fan. I'm not a mandate fan, uh, but I'm also not a fan of keeping kids home. So we gotta get kids back in school somehow, and if we can take baby steps to get there, then I think we need to take good baby steps, just not today.
Would you like a motion?
I would entertain a motion if there's no more discussion.
Adam, were, were you wanting to go through any more, I mean, read on discussing the plan or?
Yeah, the, the plan, th- those are the changes to the plan that I went over. The, uh, the rest of the plan is, is the same as what it was before, so I was just going over the changes. And, and absolutely, uh, Jason, to what you said, uh, like I said at the end of my spiel, this, this needs to be looked at often. And so this is not, and if we decide to go school to school or whatever, uh, there, there's no problem with putting that together, we just need to, we need to keep tweaking it. But we, we need something to get kids back in school starting Tuesday, and then we can, we can tweak from there.
And I agree, I think the- Sorry, my mic didn't come on. I agree, I think the school is, the school option is a good thing we need to look at, uh, so that one school is not catching up on this too.
Okay, so can I make a motion now?
Uh-
So we're gonna put in for the travel what we did last year, then? Correct?
If the, if the, Luke, do you wanna discuss travel for this year? Again, on, on the, on the expectations of, uh, you for this year? What, what you, what your preference would be out of those two? 'Cause that's not something that we have discussed openly, we went back to the original thing. So what, as far as, as far as going, uh, multiple buses, uh, and, uh, you know, one student per seat type thing, what would you feel comfortable with, feel there?
Uh, you know, obviously, this is a different season, the fall, uh, you know, and again, we have some different issues with handicap buses and, um, and things like that, so. I mean, we could, we might not be able to double, uh, you know, like right now, we're scheduled to take two buses on a Friday night football game, plus a cheer bus.
Yep.
Uh, you know, we're not gonna be able to take four football buses and two cheer buses, I mean, that's not gonna-
Yep.
We don't have the buses or the drivers to do that, but we could go to three, um, three buses. Uh, again, I think you're gonna have to use vans, uh, unless you're going to bus six kids, but, you know, they're not gonna be social distancing vans. We did last year.
Right.
Maybe we can add one buses, I'll just need to get with Heather and Durham on that. Uh, I know they can get some drivers in from Andover, but I, I don't remember who said it, but it is a, uh, everywhere you look, they were looking for bus drivers. We might have to borrow some from Andover or borrow buses, but, uh, you know, we will do our best, uh, again, we probably won't be able to double it. But we can increase, um, uh, travel as far as, like I said, three football buses and, you know, a cheer van and a bus or something like that, but-
Yep.
And we do have a lot of, uh, you know, again, which is great, a lot of activities with handicap students, so we're using those buses, those little smaller amount of kids, uh, versus a regular bus, uh, there's some issues there. I just have to get with Heather, but whatever you guys, whatever you guys, you feel, we can make work, I mean, we did it last year.
That's why I wanted to check back if you decided to put you in a bad position, so.
I do have two other locations that I can try to borrow buses from, but they're just as strapped for drivers as New York.
Right. Heather, I didn't see you here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Sorry, Heather.
Hey, uh, Chris.
Yeah, why, why do we have Luke talking?
We're listening, huh?
Yeah.
Are you proposing to the, the travel restrictions to follow the mask restrictions, or are you just wanting this to be a continuing thing for the whole sports season? The whole school year?
Yeah, we're gonna follow, follow the masks.
Okay, so you're saying-
If we're not doing that mandate, and we're looking at the safety of the kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then we're, we're, we're taking them out of this district where we're, where we're looking at doing a mask, going to another district where they don't have, maybe not have a mask, and they're gonna be traveling. So my concern is, once they leave, once they leave our district, what's gonna happen to when they get over to another district?
Right, and that, so I was just confused if you wanted that to be year, like, just across the board for the whole year or-
No, 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 just as long as-
So if the high school is-
Fifty percent.
Whatever the per, if we come up with a per building criteria-
Right, if the middle school doesn't have a mask, then-
You pack everybody in one bus and shield them.
Yeah, I mean, I got my mask on, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and that is a, that, yeah, that's a federal mandate, yeah. Any type of, any type of transportation, that's a federal mandate right now, so any, whether it's vans, whether it's buses, we have them in masks, regardless of, I mean, we've had, it would, that would've happened regardless of benefit, so that's already in those.
Right, my, and that too, and again, that's my, my biggest concern, once they leave here, how do we control what goes on over there?
Well, and you, you can't control the other district, you can-
I, I, I get that, but what are we, what, if, if we're gonna have a mask mandate here to ensure the safety of our kids when they get away from here, do they follow the same thing or not?
I think that's-
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think that our students, like we've said before, would be, if we are in a mask mandate, uh, within our district, then our students would be wearing masks unless they were in competition, uh, during the time of competition, so. Is that an entry question?
Patient doesn't say they have to wear a mask, do they, on like, on the field or anywhere, just patient said on the bus?
Uh, no, the federal, federal government said that about transportation, so in any, any vans, buses, any type of transportation that we do, there's a, there's a mask mandate there by the federal government. That was in place at the beginning, we just haven't got going yet, so.
So what year, I'm sorry, girl, what year, uh, child study, um, you know, my two granddaughters-
So what if, what if, oh, your child study, you know, my two granddaughters, they get COVID, responsible, they quarantine, like quarantine like they're supposed to. They get back to school, they have natural antibodies, and doctors can prove that, you know, with a statement written or something, do they have to mask up?
So correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're talking about here is, if we're in the criteria for masking, it doesn't matter vaccinated or not vaccinated.
Correct.
Right, that's different.
So, yeah, the hope is that we go get the green, and then it's recommended.
Yep, and then and then the only, the only, the only mandate at that time is if you were close contact and you were in the testing program. That would be the only time during, when you're in green and we are highly recommended.
Are we ready for a motion?
So, sure, sure, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we start school on Tuesday with the criteria that's given us with masks. And after a two-week period, we go to school by school masking to meet that criteria that we're given. Well, two weeks, okay, I'm just, that's that's just my motion, because if if I just know, it will go on and on, and it will end up being Thanksgiving, where we have the criteria changed to do school by school. But anyway, that's my motion, so.
Okay, so we got a motion on to. Okay, no second to that motion, so. So my thought, my thought is that, I I like the direction you're going there, but I think we need to basically say that we're going to look at that as a board at our next board meeting. Administration's going to look at, they're going to come to us, give us some ideas, some options, and we will adjust. We're going to have to adjust continually throughout the school year, but the line of saying that we are adjusting or doing something different, looking at it at least on that next board.
Yes, I can bring you a plan in two weeks that gives you an idea of what we feel are building by building.
I hope it's had the numbers plummeted or in green, and these are all recommended.
Yep.
But if that does happen between now and the next meeting, we're still going to have the plan looked at, given a plan with.
I I would say so. I I think the plan needs to be looked at very.
Yeah, the the this plan, and then and then you're asking for an adjustment to individual buildings.
Can we just, maybe not the right place to ask for this, but can we just basically turn it on and it's going to be looked at on a monthly basis?
Yep, yep.
Something like we do our executive session first.
Yes, yes.
So if it's just, I mean, we need to talk about it, talk about it, and it's not going to move on.
Oh, hell, nobody, your motion never got seconded.
I don't, so can you have two motions?
Sure, sure.
One that.
Can we have two motions? One that says we will go to building by building when we can agree on the criteria? And then another one.
We can put it all, we can put it all in one motion. Because that's basically what Jason was saying, is we're going to look at it month to month.
But I I I don't want it to be month to month. I want numbers like we are given.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying, Jason? But of course, look at it, I mean, day to day, you know, look at it constantly.
Yeah, Holly did a great job of keeping the numbers in place.
Yeah. Okay, this should just make sense. I make a motion that we start school on Tuesday with, I'm not, with everyone wearing a mask. Following the new criteria, knowing that we will go to masks by building after we're given the correct criteria? Or something else?
I would, I would recommend that the board look at what we bring you before we make any definite on that. Just to, yeah, just to, just so you can look at the, you can look at the material we bring you before. It's just like you've had a few concerns on this that we can tweak in a couple of weeks. We can bring you additional things on a building by building type situation that you can look at at that time. And then if you're comfortable with that, then we can look at that.
So is anybody, you want to amend that motion, or we we got a second on that motion, or we're all back and failed? Looking for a little direction. There there isn't a second on the motion yet. So I guess carrying no second, that motion would.
Okay, I want to make a motion, and I'll see if I can do this right, that we, I'll go ahead and start school on Tuesday with this criteria, or at least we're going to ask. We will, the administration will give us the per building recommendations for that to be reviewed at the next board meeting. Whatever date that is in two weeks.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Just because.
Got it.
So I think we got a little direction there.
Yes, thank you. So seeing that, I guess the next thing is board comments, I think we've spoken enough, so. With that being said, I want to again thank everybody for coming out. We do appreciate your your comments. It's, it's nothing that we really want to deal with, but we've got to get the kids back in school. So that's our, our first priority. We'll, we'll get this figured out. Please keep commenting to us. We're, we're sending us suggestions. It does not fall on deaf ears. We may not respond to all of them. Remember, we're getting a lot, but we'll do our best. So again, thank you for coming out, and we are turning.